It is 6:00 PM. We have three members of council present and two members of council traveling who have called in and are on phone. So at this time, I'd like to turn the first order of business over to Mr. Cobb.
We probably should, yes. Let's go ahead and do that first. Mayor, I'm going to ask Ms. Cockroft to go ahead and clarify how the quorum works and how the voting works since we do have to vote on a few items tonight.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Sorry. Jennifer Cockroft, City Attorney's Office. Just to clarify for the record, since we do have three members present, we would have a quorum, but the two members present will not qualify towards the quorum, and they may participate in the discussion, but they will not participate in voting.
Okay. Megan and Keith, did you hear that?
Can you guys speak into the microphones? I can't hear anything anybody's saying except for Dominic.
Watch it just repeated for them so they can pull the mic.
The members not present in the room would not be qualified to vote because they would not be qualified to account towards the quorum for tonight's meeting, only the members present.
So.
Participate in the discussion, but not vote.
I think you're saying we can't vote, which makes sense, but I still can't hear you. So hopefully, the rest of the meeting will be able to hear a little better.
Well, we can hear you. Can you hear me, Megan?
I can hear you. You're doing all the stuff. And I can hear Bob.
Let's just do a mic check with everybody. Bob, can you hear me, Megan?
I can hear ya.
Megan, can you hear me? Steve?
Yes. Yes, I can hear everybody on council, just hard on the edges.
All right. This is why, can you hear me?
Kinda.
Kinda? Okay.
So maybe it's just the side of the table. Can you hear Jennifer? Me?
Wait a second.
Not really. I can tell you're saying something, but I can't say what.
Jennifer, pull your mic in a little bit to you too. It's the thing here.
Yeah.
Okay. I have to move it.
Is this better?
Can you hear better now?
That is better. Yes.
Okay. Wonderful. All righty, we got the speakers set up now better, Megan. All righty, Mr. Cobb.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll turn it back over to you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the City Council to establish a tentative millage for the 2017-18 millage rates and to schedule the first public hearing for the proposed 2017-18 budget for the purposes of notification to the public under the Florida Truth and Millage statutes. The City Council, after setting the tentative millage, the City Council may subsequently reduce the millage. However, it cannot raise or increase the millage over what is set as the tentative millage. The proposed 2017-18 budget is balanced using the recommended millage rate of 5.0770 mils or $5.07 per 1,000 of assessed valuation. The debt service for the 2003 general obligation bond issue will be set at 0.2050 mils or $20.05 per $1,000 of assessed valuation. Utilizing the recommended millage, the general fund, 5.0770, and the general obligation bond rate of 0.2050, that brings a total millage of 5.2820 mils. This is the same as the FY 1617 millage. Setting the millage rate at 5.077 mils will result in a citywide tax increase of 6.58% above the rollback rate of 4.7633 mils. The maximum millage rate that can be assessed is 6.2173 mils, and that reflects the maximum that the council can enact. At your July 10th work session, the staff, we presented a balanced budget at the 5.0770 millage rate. And at the part, there were two items that were part of that proposed budget, that one being that the Community Redevelopment Agency would fund $257,000 in debt service for Sunil Park. At the July 17th CRA Governing Board meeting, we were asked to determine whether or not the funding of that debt service was in compliance with Florida State statute. We have gone through that exercise and reviewed the statute. We also asked Ms. Cockroft if she would take a look at it as well. Our findings concur, our findings found that the funding of the debt service by the CRA is eligible and compliant with State statute, and Ms. Cockroft did concur with our findings. I do have a PowerPoint that I can walk through with you. It's not the easiest statute in the world to go through, but I can walk through it if you desire for me to do that tonight. The other issue that was raised last week was whether or not we could fund a police officer position for one year utilizing impact fees. Mr. Boob has a concern regarding that. Unfortunately, with Mr. Boob being in England, it's a little, it's been difficult for us to be able to have a good conversation on how this can be done. I'm more concerned about the CRA funding the debt service than I am with the police officer position, which I think we can bring you something at your August work session that'll give you a good, a good solution for that. If you do desire, I can walk you through the statute. If you don't, that's fine as well. We can save that for a later date if you wish to prefer. Tonight, we are recommending that you set the tentative millage rate, 5.0770 mils for your operating millage, and a general obligation bond millage of 0.2050 for a total millage of 5.2820. Now, Mr. Boop has provided you with language for your motion to make sure that we cover all the different aspects that we need to cover for the statutory requirements. So with that, counsel on. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question. Jennifer, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Keith and Megan are on the phone.
Correct.
Is that, is that, explain to me why they cannot vote. Is that, is that the rule, the statute, they have to physically be here?
Correct.
Okay.
There are, I read some agey opinions quickly on the way here regarding it, and basically, it has to do with sunshine laws and things of that nature.
Okay.
You have to be physically present to participate, to vote on a matter.
Gotcha.
It's a, it's a legal thing.
Okay. No worries. Just wanted to clear that up. Thanks.
Since they're not physically present to participate, then they're not entitled to count towards the quorum.
Okay.
To vote. Now in the future, there may be legislative changes on that due to electronic technology and stuff. I know some of that's been discussed, but at this point, that's the state of the law.
Okay. I tried. Okay. No worries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. I'm, I'm okay with not.
Mayor?
Oh. Yes.
Councilman Britton?
I heard what you were saying, but I just want to get clear in my head. A supermajority is all we need tonight, correct?
Correct.
Correct. We're just going to need, we have three of us present, so any majority vote would prevail, two to one.
Okay. Good enough. Thanks.
And I'm sorry, Bob.
I don't need to see the presentation. I take your word that we're good on the CRA. I don't, I don't know about anybody else, but I'm good with that.
Steve, what do you think?
I spoke to Mr. Cobb already.
You're good?
Yes.
All right. Well, with two of us not here, it would be kind of futile to, I would think, go through the PowerPoint. That might be something the CRA board would be more interested in seeing. So if, if the two on the phones concur, maybe we should wait and see the PowerPoint at the CRA meeting. Megan and Keith, Megan first.
I prefer waiting to the CRA meeting to get everybody's input.
Okay. Keith, you're good with that, too?
That's fine.
All righty. Terrific. Then at this time, I'm going to move on to asking our city attorney to read the Resolution Number 3451-17 by title only, please.
Resolution Number 3451-17, a resolution adopting the tentative millage rates to be levied for fiscal year 2017-18 by City of Oviedo. City government adopting the millage rates for the 2017-2018 fiscal year for the City of Oviedo at the overall combined rate of 5.2820 mils with 5.0770 mils for the city's operations and 0.2050 mils for payment on the 2003 general obligation bond issued/voted debt service, expressing legislative and administrative findings and intent establishing the date, time, and place for the first public hearing on the tentative millage rates to be September 7, 2017, and the first public hearing on the proposed budget on the same date at 6:30 PM, and providing for scrivenor shares implementing administrative actions and savings provision, conflicts severability, and effective date.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 3451-17, adopting a tentative ad valorem millage rate of 5.0770 mils for fiscal year 2017-18, adopting a tentative general obligation bond millage rate of 0.2050 mils for fiscal year 2017-2018, adopting a tentative total millage rate of 5.2820 mils, which results in a citywide tax increase of 6.58% above the rollback rate of 4.7633 mils, and scheduling the first public hearing for September 7, 2017, at 6:30 PM here at Oviedo City Hall, Oviedo City Council Chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765. So moved.
Second.
Don't move.
Nope.
You can't, you can't vote. Shush over there.
Damn it.
You know, you don't say anything when you're in here, but boy, we get you on the phone. All righty, we have a motion and a second. I'll go through everybody. I'll start with the motioner. Councilman Hen, can you have the floor?
Nope. Looked good, Mary. Staff, thank you so much. I know this was not an easy budget for you all to work on, but on paper, you made it look easy, and we know it was not easy. So thank you very much for that. And I say this every year, I do want to just clarify, people hear 6.58% tax increase. Well, it's not really the case. You know, when you talk about a rollback rate, just so the audience understands, the staff understands, but that rollback rate is really the amount of property tax to be the same this year that you had last year. So the millage rate is staying the same. Is that correct, Mr. Cobb?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay. Great. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, staff. Great job.
Councilman Pollock?
All right. I've got, I've got a few issues that I wanted to discuss before we go through with this. First of all, this, this motion or what we're doing tonight, if I understand it correctly, is just setting the maximum millage rate we can have.
Correct.
So whatever we set tonight, we can't go up from this. We can only go down.
That is correct.
Okay. I, I've got two issues with the, with the current budget. One of them is the uncertainty about the CRA debt because we don't know how the CRA is going to vote. And then the other issue is the use of the fund balance to balance the budget. There's $329,000 that we're using from the fund balance. In corporate world, that would be like using retained earnings to balance your budget. That, that to me is a little concerning to do that. I know it's, you know, reading through the, reading through the budget book, I know it's okay to do, but I, I'm just concerned of this, about this. My proposal tonight would be to, for tonight's meeting, to set a higher millage rate based off of the review of the, based because of the CRA vote. We can always bring it back down once we get a clarification from the CRA, because that's $257,000 that's going to get ripped out of the budget if the CRA doesn't vote for it. And then I would really like to try to dwindle down the use of the fund balance. But those, those two items combined comes out to a .245 millage rate increase for those, for just those two items. So my proposal would be to, you know, if we wanted to go up as far as that, or even just the CRA, which is .107 millage increase, at least to give us some, so that we don't paint ourselves in a corner if the CRA vote doesn't, doesn't allow this. So that's my thought on it, so.
Mr. Mayor? Hang on a second. Just one, two, three. That would be 5.3310, adding it all together.
Something like that.
I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor?
Mr. Cobb, can I ask you, using the fund balance, and maybe this is a Mr. Boob question, the fund balance policy is 15% that we have to keep always? So we're taking this money to use to balance, aren't we still at like 16.67 or something?
Yes, sir. We balance the budget with a fund balance ratio of 16.67%.
So we're still above the council's set policy? So if the CRA did not pass for the debt service, we'd still be above what the council policy is on what needs to be in the bank, correct?
Yes, sir. We do.
Just want you to keep that in mind. So we're, we're good, because those trim notices go out and the rate is up. You get a lot of calls, even though, you know, in September, you lower them back. That's the only caution I would give you.
Councilman Pollock, you still have the floor?
Okay. Yeah, that was, that's all I had. I'm just, I'm just a little concerned about the, about the use of that fund balance. I understand what you're saying about the, the 16%. Usually, you know, typically, what I, what I've seen in the past is, you know, you use the fund balance when you, when you're working on your actuals and you, and you get caught in a bind. But to use the, to actually use the fund balance, especially to this degree, for, for the actual budget is a little bit concerning. But that's all I had. Anyways.
That's, that's completely understandable. Before I go to the, I'll go to Councilman Britton first on the phone. The only food for thought that I would, I would give you for that one is, you know, the fund balance is the taxpayer's money. You know, it's, it's their money, and we're still ahead of our policy. So I would find it difficult myself to raise a millage when we have their money already, when we can use that money for that, that purpose. And as far as the CRA funding Oviedo on the park, it's what the CRA is for. So, you know, one of the purposes of many, so. Anyway, Councilman Britton, I'll go to you first.
Man, I had a quick dig up here. My thought, we, we got a long standing, understanding with staff that we would try to maintain that 5.2 or under 5.2 millage rate, and I'm not really inclined to allow them. I'd rather have a real situation and keep it under that and hold it as it is and raise it now and then lower it later.
All righty. So you want to keep it where it is now, and then if possible, we lower it later? Is that what I understood?
No, I'd rather keep it where it is now and keep it where it is later. Don't change it.
Okay. Don't change it. Okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I misunderstood. Did you have anything else to add?
No. I'll go ahead.
All righty. Councilmember, Megan, are you there?
I am here.
You're.
And I'd like to have, I'd like to have my cake and eat it, too. There's a couple of things in the skip it this year part of the budget, like repairing roofs, that kind of make me raise an eyebrow. But there's also, because of the rearranging, and high five virtually to Mr. Boop and his team for rearranging things such that we're not counting on money that may not come in. But there is money that may come in, and I hope it's enough to cover the roofs and some of the other structural things that it would be very unwisely for us not to address. But all being said, if we don't fix it, I think we should leave the building where it is and trust that whatever may come in will be sufficient to figure things out and that the CRA will do the right thing.
All righty. Thank you. Anything else, Megan?
That's it.
All righty. I'll just go around the table one more time. Deputy Mayor, anything?
No, sir. Looks good.
Councilman Pollock?
I said my piece.
I don't know if it got any traction.
It didn't, but.
I don't know if you were feeling the love there or not.
I know.
Councilman Britton, anything else?
I'm listening.
All righty. And Megan, I've already asked you. So there's.
Now, I could say, if that was below 15%, that would have got some traction.
Yeah.
You were, you were.
You're on the right track.
You were definitely on the right track, for sure.
Accounting in you coming out, that's good. All right. Let me double back. The motion on the table is to adopt the millage rate as presented. So for the three of us who are sitting here, all in favor of adopting Resolution 3451-17, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All righty. So we're going to move on to our second item of business, and the second item of business is a quick one. It's just the first reading of Ordinance Number 1655, Amendments to the Land Development Code to Address Pharmacies, Drug Stores. I don't even know what that other word is, but I'll just leave it alone. If our city attorney could read the Ordinance 1655 by title only.
Yes, sir. Ordinance Number 1655, an ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, amending the Land Development Code of the City of Oviedo, specifically Land Development Code, Article 4, Zoning Districts and Regulations, Article 5, Supplementary Use Regulations, and Article 6, Downtown Mixed Use Districts, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for implementing administrative actions, savings qualification, correction of scrivenor shares, conflict severability, and effective date.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for council to approve amendments to the Land Development Code related to the zoning districts for pharmacies, drugstores, and apothecaries. At your July 17th meeting, council.
Apothecaries? That's how you pronounce that. That's like something you see on a medieval wall, or something like that.
Yes, sir. At your July 17th meeting, the council did give direction to staff to prepare an ordinance to visit the zoning districts where pharmacies, drugstores, and apothecaries are permissible uses. The staff drafted the ordinance that is here tonight. I'd like to have Dr. Correa come up, if you desire, and tell you about the ordinance. Her and her staff really put the time in last week getting this ordinance ready so that you could have it. So I think it would be best if you hear firsthand from her.
Sure.
And if she will come up tonight, what we're asking you to do is to read the ordinance by title, which is done, and then to schedule a public hearing for Monday, August 21st, 2017. Dr. Correa has also scheduled a land planning, a local planning agency, public hearing for August the 8th. The, the second public hearing for City Council would be held on September the 7th. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Correa.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just hang on one second. Let us just move that microphone over by you so those on the phone will hear better. There you go.
So we started the analysis to propose Ordinance 1655 by identifying where pharmacies are permissible uses today in the city. So currently, we allow pharmacies as permissible uses in the following zoning districts. The zoning districts regulated by Article 4 would be OC, C1, and C2. Zoning districts regulated by Article 6, which is adopted our mixed-use downtown, would be Historic Downtown District Core, Historic Downtown District Perimeter, City Hall Retail, and Division Street. And in the new downtown, we allow it in the Village Core and the Sub District A and B. We have a map that I sent to you all today, and it's an attachment, would be attachment to, that shows all the zoning districts in the city where we allow pharmacies today, and it has all the zonings that I listed now, plus some PUDs. So the PUDs would be the commercial portion of the PUD, and the underlying zoning would be either OC, C1, and C2. And we also identified in this map where we have existing pharmacies today in the city and proposed pharmacies in the city, and some prospective projects that we hear that applicants will apply. Ordinance Number 1655 proposes to allow pharmacies only in the following zoning districts, in C2 as a permissible use, and in C1 under a special exception use order. To address the existing and proposed pharmacy locations outside C2 zoning, Ordinance Number 1655 also states that, notwithstanding any provision of this ordinance or the Land Development Code, pharmacies existing at the time of the ordinance effective date shall be considered permissible uses as a matter of right at their present location, so that we fast, you know, the locations of the existing and proposed pharmacies. The schedule for considering Ordinance 1655 will be the land planning agency will conduct a public hearing on August 8. City Council's second reading and first public hearing will be August 21st, and City Council's third reading and the adoption public hearing would be September 7th. It's recommended that City Council read Ordinance 1655 by title only, declare it zoning in progress, and schedule a public hearing for Monday, August 21st, 2017.
Thank you, Dr. Correa. Does anybody have any questions? I'll just, I'll go around so that way we get everybody. Deputy Mayor?
Nope. I have nothing.
Councilman Pollock?
I just wanted to clarify the, because these, these maps look a little misleading. The area under the current zoning is just the commercial portion of it, so.
For the PUD.
Right. So you're, but you're, you're showing the whole PUD right now, so it makes it look like there's a lot more area under the current zoning that, that would, would, it would be allowable, but it, but it's really not.
We don't have in our GIS layer the PUD differentiated by residential portion and the commercial portion. So in the first map, you're right, it shows the whole PUD zoning district. In the second map, and we can go over the second one, we showed actually the, the proposed zoning districts and the exact locations where we have existing pharmacies and proposed pharmacies. So for instance, the pharmacy at Publix, at the new Publix, at Sterling Creek, we are fasting that location, and that is the map that we are showing now.
Because when you look at the two, it looks like we've completely just eliminated everything, but we really didn't because a lot of that is residential.
You're absolutely correct.
So it's a little misleading, but.
All the major gateways, I think what councilman's getting at, are, are there. You know, Lockwood, 434, 426, you know, all the big commercial areas of the city. So.
So the proposed.
Yeah.
Ordinance would allow C2 pharmacies as a permissible use under C2, and C1 would be special exception, plus all the locations that we have already pharmacies, existing pharmacies and proposed pharmacies. So pharmacies that we are reviewing. For instance, the Med Sea project has a pharmacy in it, and because we're already reviewing the project, we are avassing that location as well.
Okay. Well, considering that their research is genetic drugs, I would assume that they would have a pharmacy at Med Sea.
Yeah.
That's what they do.
Yeah.
All righty. Councilman Pollock, anything else?
That's all I have.
If I could ask one, one favor, could we get GIS to change the colors on the second map, because the red and the pink are just.
Okay. We will.
Let's do like red and green, and orange, just something to differentiate C1, C2. Councilwoman Megan, are you there?
I'm here, and I like casting minute wide, and we can make it less restrictive if it seems sensible at a, at a later meeting.
Okay. So you're in agreement, then, with the, what's presented?
With what?
I said you're in agreement with what's presented, because it just makes it simple. Is that what you said?
Oh, yes, yes. I can't entirely hear what you're saying with, I'm agreeing with what everybody's saying so far, but if you're talking about 1%, then I missed something big.
I'm sorry, Brian, did you want to answer?
Was there a discussion of 1%? Or are you just saying am I consent with everybody else?
No, I was just asking if you were in agreement with the, with the ordinance in the back.
Oh, yes.
After you've, after you've reviewed it.
I, I am, yes. I thought there was talk about percentages, and then I was about to get all concerned because, yeah. How it's presented seems great.
Good. Good, good, good. Councilman Britton, are you okay?
I'm good, thanks.
All righty. So it seems that we have consensus, so let me entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing on Ordinance Number 1655 for August 21st, 2017, here at Oviedo City Hall in the Oviedo City Council Chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765. 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by anyone?
Have a quick question.
Sure.
Mr. Cobb, has any of the other cities, I know Longwood, Longwood has, has approved, but has any of the other cities weighed in on this, other than us yet?
I haven't heard of any officially. I've heard that Longwood may be revising the ordinance that they adopted earlier, and I think I've heard as well that Altamont may be working on an ordinance. I think Dr. Correa did some research, and you may want to update on that.
We were contacted by the county, they, they wanted to know, they were interested to know what we are doing, and so actually, many cities are waiting to see who is going to be the first one to...
Right.
...to regulate.
Well, that's good, so hopefully what we did will spur everybody else, and they all hear the people speaking loud and clear. That's the, that's the hope, so.
I think Winter Springs has a moratorium going still, and so does Sanford, I know that.
Sanford extended the moratorium.
Yeah, they extended it to January.
Now, Dora has one in place, but will be amending it.
Now, Dora will be amending. There you go.
All right.
Slowly but surely.
Some action out there. It's good.
Megan or Keith, anything else?
I'm good.
All righty, I will call the vote just to schedule the public hearing. The motion's on the table. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Aye.
Yeah, aye over here, too.
All righty.
You may vote.
There you go. We'll count it. Our third item of business was an update from Seminole State College, but with two members not present this evening, we have pushed that off till August 28, I believe?
Yes, sir.
All righty, well then, with all that being said, this meeting is adjourned.